Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Western Reserve Board of Education to order. Could I ask for a roll call, please?
Richard Wobbin?
Yes.
Brian Daniel?
Present.
Melissa Potts?
Yes.
Melissa Potts?
Present.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is nomination for president for 2014 of the school board. Do you have any nominations?
Nominate Ruth.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Nominations for vice president for 2014. I nominate Ms. Potts.
I'll second it.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
You're welcome.
Now we will go into the regular board meeting with... Treasurer's recommendations. Number one, it's recommended that the service fund for the calendar year of 2014 be approved in the amount of $7,500 to be used for expenses of board members or their official representatives in performance of their duties while attending in-service training sessions, workshops, and conferences. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second. Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes. Number two, it is recommended that the treasurer be given authorization to invest in active funds wherever possible with the Farmers National Bank of Camfield. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Number three, it is recommended that the treasurer be authorized to secure advance, whenever possible, on the 2014 property tax collections from the county auditor. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Number four, it is recommended that the treasurer be given authorization to issue and sign checks to meet payroll and invoices in accordance with the adopted appropriation measure that is currently in effect. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes. Number five, it is recommended that the 2014 regular meetings of the Board of Education be held.
Is there a deal?
Second person.
Second person. Just while we're on that, next month's meeting is another parent-teacher conference, which we could do in other building first. If you choose to. I think that seems to be possible.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second. Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes. It is recommended that be appointed to serve as OSBA Legislative Liaison for 2014, share information with board members from OSBA about state and federal education-related legislation.
I'll nominate Ms. Potts.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Number seven, it is recommended that be appointed to serve as OSBA Student Achievement Liaison for 2014, share with board members information from OSBA on ways to improve student achievement.
Looks like students.
Yeah, it's...
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes. Now I will call the regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Treasurer's recommendations, number one, it is recommended that the minutes of the December 12, 2013 Board of Education meeting be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
It is recommended that the December 2013 financial reports be approved, the December listing of bills be approved as mailed to each member in advance of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes. It is recommended that the agreement with OSBA for 2014 Ohio Office Policy Development Quarterly Services be approved at a cost of $400.
So moved. I'll second it. Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes. Number four, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the renewal of membership in the Ohio School Board Association for the 2014 calendar year at a cost of $3,167. So moved.
Second. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Number five, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the date of January 1, 2014 as the official look-back start date for the Affordable Care Act measurement period.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendations, it is recommended that Karen Barbone be hired as a seven-hour janitor effective January 21, 2014, pending receipt of the necessary documentation and paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
That's billing position, because we've made a bus drive, so we'll start in those positions. We're still waiting some of the FBI and PCI checks, but we'll start Karen, maybe we'll start driving bus next week.
Number two, it is recommended that Andrew Hake be approved as an unpaid volunteer ski club advisor.
Second. Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes. Number three, it is recommended that Robin Lester be added to the certified substitute list.
So moved. Second. Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes. Number four, it is recommended that the board approve January 6, 2014, January 7, 2014 as calamity days, and also a two-hour delay on January 8 due to inclement weather conditions, and to forward the request to the Ohio Department of Education for a calamity day waiver. So moved.
Second. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Number five, it is recommended that the board approve an increase in the monthly payment made to all seasons environmental from the current monthly rate of $375 to a monthly rate of $400 for the monitoring and maintaining of the district's wastewater treatment plant.
So moved. Second. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Number six, it is recommended that Mark Hall's be appointed to fill the vacancy on the Western Reserve School Board for a term of two years beginning February 1, 2014, and concluding December 31, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes. Number seven, it is recommended that Beth Myers be hired as a tutor beginning January 21 for the remaining of the 2013-14 school year.
So moved. Second. Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
She already met him.
She didn't wait any longer.
Should we do the addendums? We have a board addendum here. Number one, it's recommended that Caroline McDermott be approved as an unpaid volunteer swim coach for 2013-14 school year.
So moved. Second. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
She has done that for a couple of years now, only one student in the high school that is involved with that.
Who is this woman?
Laura Winn. I think she's a junior this year, so... Somebody said somebody involved too. This Caroline McDermott is involved with one of those quad clubs, she's been there for a few years, is volunteer. That way this Laura can compete as an individual in the state tournaments.
Perfect.
That's good. That's great.
Number two, it's recommended that Deborah Shell be added to the certified substitute list.
So moved. Second. Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes. Number three, it's recommended that Brittany Gregory and Rebecca Pellicioni be added to the classified substitute list.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes. Number four, it is recommended that the service inspection agreement from North Coast Fire Protection be renewed for the year 2014.
So moved. Second. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
And we now have building principal reports. Debbie, I'll let you go first.
All right. Well, you know, not a lot, we haven't been here for a while, so... But I do have to tell you, we had one of the best ends of the season. Christmas was, you could not help but be in the Christmas spirit. We started off in the morning, we did the Polar Express, we showed it, and then we took a tea cart and went around to all the classes, dressed like Nels, I'll have you know. All the kids came in their pajamas to school, and we served hot chocolate and cookies. We went to lunch, where Lorelei Huff entertained not just the elementary school, which she entertained the high school first, and this little third grade girl had led everybody in the high school in caroling. Then she fired Bob Adja because he didn't know a certain song. She rehired him after he learned it, and she led the entire middle school in caroling, walking across the stage, she was like a star. And she had backup singers, too. And then she led the elementary school, it was so nice. And then we had really nice parties afterwards, so thank you to PTO, they were wonderful. It was such a great way to leave, it was wonderful. So that was good. This month we came back in full swing, I think we had meetings like every day, it seems like, but we're kind of getting in that time of the year. We are having our family literacy night, this will be the fourth one on the 21st. Those are going very well, that's the students that we identified at the beginning of the year that were really at risk, first through third grade. We wrote that grant and we're putting in a lot of services, but one of the key elements is having the families and teaching the parents how to work with their children at home to really support their reading. The 29th, we have a visiting author, Shelley Gill, coming, and we're going to have an evening program. I'll get more information out as it gets closer, we've already sent information out to the parents. We had a really nice honor, Jennifer Moste wrote in a grant for the SATC, which is a, it's the Society of Professional Chemists, I think, but it's down in Pittsburgh, and she got $500, so she'll get some junior snap circuits and erosion tables, some really nice things for science. So she won that, she was very excited, it was her first grant she had written, so she was excited. And just to save the date, May 19, I sent the survey home to see what, you know, if parents were going to be coming, I just need to get a number of how many are coming. We're having the Western Reserve family explore the outdoors for the elementary school, and it's turned into kind of a beast. It started out with just ODNR and the Division of Wildlife, and then as they were talking to people, we'd have our meetings, and more people would show up, and they would say, "Well, we were talking about this," and they thought this was a really cool idea. So it's really environmental education on a Saturday out at Berlin Lake. The Army Corps of Engineers is being wonderful with this, they're helping us a lot. And what we want to do, the whole goal of this, is to show families that there's things that they can do outside in the summertime, that's why we're doing it in May. They've been so gracious to say if we help them clean up the park, we can camp for free. So we're going to camp, we're camping, it's day and night. We have a ton of activities going on, we sent the survey home, and I thought, well, you know, we'll get like maybe half of the people, we're getting a pretty good response. So it's going to be, it's going to be a big day. We've worked on some of the preliminary things, some lunch stuff and some of the activities, but it's good. So I'm actually getting pretty excited about it, so that's it, that's what's going on at the elementary school.
You didn't tell them the drawing for the superintendent sleepover?
Oh, that's right, they said that, yeah, yeah. And that was the big draw, is the superintendent is going to camp and look at the stars with all the kids, and leave campfire stories. Yeah. I already checked with your secretary, you're in town. They're staying with Mr. Zajcak.
God bless you.
And that's it, that's all.
That's good. We had several things going on as well, we had our spelling bee right at the end, right before Christmas break, in which Taylor Garner was our spelling bee champion. She comes from a long line of Garners who have won the spelling bee, so she's very happy with that. Also, we had Activity Day that day, we did our awards, our mid-year awards assembly, where we tried to reward all the kids who showed progress in junior high. And then we did the Activity Day over in the Reserve Gym with volleyball, and then we brought them all back and sent them home for 16 days. Little extended vacation. Also, over Christmas break, our custodians were able to get every filter changed in the building, which is 120 filters. So we were able to get those changed, we were able to get the Reserve Building, part of that, the U part around the gym, completely refinished, stripped and waxed, as well as some restrooms over there fixed. So it's always nice sometimes when they don't have disruptions of students throwing up or things happening, where you can actually really work and get some things done. For the high school next week, midterms will be Tuesday through Friday. It'll be the end of the semester on Friday, and the report cards will come out that following Friday, the 31st. Eighth grade will be heading to the Mahoney County Career and Tech Center on February 7. I'm sure Mrs. Bear will be going on that trip on February 7. Also, we had our Shakespeare monologue competition. I even think this wouldn't have a lot of kids, but we had 61 kids participate in round one. Of that, yeah, 61 juniors and seniors participated. And of that, there are roughly about 35 left for competition tomorrow night after school. And the people from Cleveland State, from the Shakespeare Society, actually come down to do the judging. They did the monologue training here, how to present it, during school day right before break. So they'll be here tomorrow night to pick the winners of that competition, and the winners will advance to the state Shakespeare monologue competition. So that's a little different, you wouldn't think that many kids would be involved, but kids are always looking for something to do, I think, most of the time. So that'll be tomorrow night will be the finals of that. Also, February 12, our junior class will be heading to the Cleveland Museum of Art, and what they're going, they're going to go with our Mr. Gruber and Mr. Henderson, and what they're doing is they're doing a combined crossover, it's in your mailbox, a combined crossover of, they're going to look at artwork, tour, go through group tour with the Cleveland Art Museum, and then they're going to have to write a, pick a painting and write about the artist, the whole idea behind the painting, and where the painting actually progressed and why is it here. So it's kind of a combo between the two art students and the junior students, will be, English students will be doing that. That'll be on February 12. So that'll be, that'll be an interesting trip for them. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any reports of an hour of senior PTO?
We don't have a whole lot going on since January, it's usually a quiet time. Our Santa's workshop went really well, classroom parties went really well. We did start working on finalizing some of our things for our auction fundraiser in March. We had our meeting last night, just the auction stuff took us like an hour to get through, it was a really long meeting. Our tickets are going to be $7 each, which is going to include dinner at admission to the event. We're going to be putting together a list of the things that will be auctioned off. Hopefully, some of that's going to be together for the February issue, the roundup, and then again in March, we'll have a more complete list as it gets closer. So hopefully that'll go really well. Everybody complains about the catalog, so we cut that, hopefully this will be, you know, a better solution, we'll find out. We are looking at having a winter carnival again this year, maybe February 21, if it's free-ish. There aren't any basketball games, and I can talk to you later about it, so if you don't have your calendar, it's not a deal, but it is a Friday with new basketball games, either home or away, and that would just be K through 5, it's just for the elementary kids, and you know, all of the games are really kind of simple, the older kids wouldn't, there's nothing for them to do there, so it's just for the little ones, but we'll have that going on. We are going to be setting up a text notification system for sharing information, like especially like with the school being closed last Tuesday, and getting information out about, you know, it being canceled. We have, you know, we use Facebook, but not everybody uses Facebook, and we have a website, not everybody always checks that, but at least texting would be a way to get a lot of information out to a lot of people quickly, so we're going to send forms home for people to sign up, you know, to opt in if they want to, to get text notifications. So we'll start with that. We are looking at putting together a clothing drive at some point in the next month or two, I don't know, I need to find somebody that wants to chair this committee, but in December, it was brought to my attention that we have a lot of families that are struggling right now, and you know, especially families that have like two or three or more kids. You know, so many of us that have multiple kids, we have a lot of leftover clothes that could go to other kids that could use those, so we were thinking about putting together a clothing drive at some point, just so families that want to come and get some things, they can, and for people that want to get rid of things, they can, so you know, it works out for everybody, but it's an idea that we were kind of kicking around, so we'll work on that, it's in progress. I think that's pretty much everything, yeah, that's everything we have. We are, we're working on seeking incorporation for the PTO, just to, you know, protect the executive board from any liability issues, because we're not currently, so we're in the process of kind of cleaning things up with our organization, so other lesser things to do. Our next meeting's going to be Tuesday, February 4, at 6:00, and then...
Thank you. Mrs. Zajcak.
Okay, in that packet that I gave you, I just have some things that I wanted to go over. The first item is a four-page third-grade reading guarantee policy, that's required policy that we probably should have done a while back, and we should have two readings on it, so this will go as the first reading, and basically it follows state law as to the third-grade guarantee, when the assessment is done by September 30, what is done with, you know, students that need remediation or intervention, and the requirements for the staff as far as the reading endorsement, we're good on all of that, so this came from Ohio School Boards, and it's the recommended policy, so we'll have that on the recommendation for next month's agenda. Along with that, because part of that third-grade guarantee is that if any student that's tested is not at third-grade level, they can be retained, so the promotion and retention of students policy, the first page of the one that you have in your packet is exactly the same, that's policy that we already have. What we're going to do is add that second page, which pertains more specifically to the third-grade guarantee, and the provisions by law that require what needs to be done for that, should a student need to be retained, and then at what point, if they need to be, if they've reached reading level, then they can be promoted on to fourth grade with their age groups, if that's the case. We're in pretty good shape with that right now, I know Debbie's literacy grant and a lot of things that are being done. Have they given them the iPads yet? We have...
We're looking for if they get the iPads, and then the other thing is, we had, we got our results back from our October testing, they have to take, the third graders take the OAA reading assessment in October, and then they take it again in May. Five of our students did not pass, they didn't meet the score to be what they consider passing, which is 392. And so what we're doing is we're forming a separate group with them, really working with the parents and the students intensively, providing after-school tutoring for those students, really trying to just build those skills up, and they'll be getting iPads as well. So we ordered 30 iPads, and we've got the life-proof cases with them, and there's a piece on our user agreement that says if it's out of the life-proof case, if it's, you know, if it's damaged beyond regular wear, that they have to replace it, so, through the school, not, they can't go to Best Buy and just buy one, because these are actually from the school, so...
So those are two policies that we need to get in, and then in looking at that, that's something that we're going to have to take a look at, is our policy manual has not been updated, and every time there's a new House bill or Senate bill, and it changes things, so we're going to look at maybe having Ohio School Boards, they do that as a part of their, one of their functions, so, fourth fee, obviously, but it is a pretty extensive thing, and something you need to keep updated with the laws as they change, so we will be looking at some of those things as well. Third item on the list there is the 2014-15 school year calendar, and I gave you a couple of options or drafts last month, and oddly enough, the one that is very similar to the one that we've always used, was the one that the county is going to try to go with county-wide, and I think I mentioned the last board meeting. When you have like the vocational school with 13 or 14 school districts coming together, and everybody has a different spring break, and summer open, you know, two days, the week before Christmas, they go a couple days, and so on, so they're trying to get some uniformity to the schedule, and it's tough to do because of, you know, certain ethnic religious factions, I know Camel has usually the Greek Orthodox Easter that they are off, and so anyway, this is the option one that I gave you last month, and I think this is very, very similar to very, very similar to what we had, much like this year's. Basically, the two full weeks, because Christmas next year will be on a Thursday, so that Monday, Tuesday before, so we're talking about having school then, and it's just, it's such a tough thing, you know, to do. So very, very close following of what our calendar is this year, and we'll have that on the agenda for next month. There is another superintendent's meeting coming up to, I just hate to jump on it and then decide they want to do something a little different with that. You already got the information. Well, let me stick with my list instead of the, construction on the Reserve Building is complete. We did a final walkthrough and punch list. Couple of paint issues that they're going to deal with, some places on the beams where when they were putting the metal trim up, they scratched a little bit, and that'll all be done once the weather breaks. But I know Dave Harrison sent me an email wanting to know if everybody was satisfied.
It's beautiful. I love it.
I told him, you know, I thought it came out really nice, and had a lot of positive comments on it, so I was going to relay that to them, that everybody's pleased as long as we are on that. Another meeting tomorrow that I have is with the ITCL divisional realignment. Again, just to kind of fill you in, I listed, what they're looking at doing is breaking it into three divisions, which probably makes more sense because of the size of the schools. With the two, you always have those middle three or four that are close, and one year they're up, one year they're down. This is going to take into consideration size as well as regional, and what they would do with football, as you can see on the paper I have for you, Mill Ridge, Jackson Milton, Louisville, McDonald, possibly Sebring. Sebring's one that's, they're not sure which way they may swing, but basically, that core of five teams would be for football, always playing every year, and then there would be some crossover from either the upper or the lower. It'll be kind of a random thing, so it might be one year that we might be playing South Range and Lisbon. We might do that for two years, and then it might be, you know, two others, just kind of randomly do that. Still keep the three non-league games at the beginning of the season that you can choose, and, you know, I think Jeff and Andy have done a good job trying to pick some teams that are going to, you know, help us out when it comes time to look at playoffs and those kind of things, so we still have that option. Basketball, we pretty much play everybody in the ITCL as it is, so that's really not going to be a factor with basketball, boys and girls basketball, softball, baseball track. So really, more meetings on that, but it looks like that's the direction that that's going to go. Also, just before I forget to mention, tomorrow, girls' basketball team plays Columbiana. They beat Columbiana, who was favored to win the league already, at Columbiana, and it's a big game. Our girls are doing well. They're undefeated in the league, and a big game tomorrow night, so if you're out and about, stop in. Rumor has it Columbiana's going to try to make it a home game for themselves. They're going to try to bring a bunch of people, because they want to get back at us. So it could be a good game, so along with that. Did the lights shut off? You see it. All county boards meeting, you got that information. I think the reservations need to be in by the 31st, if you're interested in going to that. That's on, actually, there's a mistake. That's on Wednesday, February 5. On this flyer that they sent us from the county, it says Monday, February 5, but it's actually on Wednesday, February 5, right at the MCC TC. I think all or most of you went to that last year, and they have dinner in the bistro restaurant and then kind of a short meeting. So we'll get back in touch with you on that. Item number seven, we're going to promote, I heard at some other schools that have done this, I thought it was a great idea, we're going to promote Family Night on March 12. We've already sent an email out to the teachers. There's no homework assignments, there's going to be no practices, no conditioning, no tryouts. Kids are going to go home, and we're going to really promote, trying to do something as a family that night. Nothing here at the school at all. We're not even bringing the families here.
What day of the week is that on?
What's that?
What day of the week is that?
That's a Wednesday night, March 12. We've already talked to PTO, Gridiron, Athletic Boosters, and Music Boosters, if they wanted to do one of those nights where you go and the restaurant donates so much to that group, you know, from their bill. We're going to talk to some of the local ones that aren't doing that, just to see if they want to do some type of promotion of, you know, buy dinner, get a dinner free at a restaurant, or some of those kind of things. In our newsletter articles for this month and for February and for March, we're, you know, going to come up, I know Danielle and Debbie have put together a lot of suggestions, you know, playboard games, you know, call the neighbors down and have a Wii contest, or just some things, give them some ideas to do. So kind of a, see how it goes. We've already looked at a night in the fall, potentially, if it goes well, do it again in the fall, and, you know, and obviously, sports are a crucial thing, and we looked at a night in November, that even if football is still going on, one football practice till 5 o'clock, and, you know, everybody else will be kind of in between football and basketball. So kind of a neat thing. Like I said, it's not my idea, it's something I heard some other schools doing, thought it would be something pretty good to do. Our calamity days, if you've got any calls or concerns about the AL call, what we found out is that the AL call wasn't necessarily going out. When we have that, we have all the schools that are with that ed connection have different phone exchanges, and they use all the phone exchanges to make the calls out. Well, when we use all those phone exchanges, if so many of those calls come from Salem, and it's a long-distance call, and if you've ever dialed either the one when you didn't have to, or didn't dial the one, and you get that voice comes on and says, "This is a local call," well, the AL call thinks that's an answer machine, and we set it up to leave a message on the answer machine, and it leaves a message that's out there in cyberspace and nobody ever hears it. So when we looked at the report, and I put my number on that, just to make sure I didn't screw it up and give the wrong time or the wrong dates or whatever, and I wasn't getting the calls at home, and I couldn't figure it out, and here it said it left a message, and I know it didn't, so we looked further into it. So they're working on that, so right now, the AL calls aren't getting to everybody. But I got to tell you, the television stations are so much better this year. There's a login. I go to the, I go to the website, there's a login, a password, it says Western Reserve School, status. Do a drop-down, close, submit, and I'm telling you, almost as quick as you hit submit, it's on that crawler. And the one site does all the TV channels, ABC, CBS, Fox, about five radio stations are all that part of that clear channel, all at one with one shot. WFMJ's a separate one, but very similar kind of thing, so the TVs and the radios are probably a little quicker and up to date than the AL call is right now. Last thing I have is, I'm assuming you all get this in the mail, they have a thing on here that you can subscribe to it electronically and get it for free. Would you guys be interested? It's, I think it's $150 a year or something like that. Would you rather be getting it in the mail, paper copies, or electronically? Can you open that electronically?
Sometimes.
I mean, we can keep it, you know, keep it as it is.
I won't cry if I don't get it.
You want to read it? It'll kill trees.
It would probably just come as a mail. Maybe the bar effects. I think you were going to plug it in.
There you go.
Okay, we'll look into that. And that's all I have. Any questions? Kind of a lot. It's been a while. Ed, do you have an OC report?
No.
No?
No.
Just want to make sure. Any other business? And I have a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?